Okay, call to order. The meeting will come to order. The time is 5:30 PM on Monday, November 16th, 2020. This is a regular monthly meeting of the DC Commission on Arts and Humanities, held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and using the Cisco Web virtual meeting platform. The next regular meeting will be held on Monday, December 14th, 2020. Kay Kendall, Chair of the Commission. I'm gonna call roll.
You're on mute, Kay.
Fun time to tell me. Okay. Start over.
We heard the other part.
Oh, you did?
It's just a roll call.
I didn't realize I muted myself. Alma? Cece?
Here.
Thank you. Cora?
Hello?
Derek?
Here.
Graham?
Chin?
Here.
Jose?
Kimber?
Mariah?
Mary Ann? Natalie? Rona? I see, Rona, but you're muted.
I said here.
Okay, Cora, I see you too, but you were muted. I'll check you in. Stacy? Okay, we can try again. Alma, Gates? Jose? Kimber? Mariah? Mary Ann? A new Mary Ann might be late. Natalie? Stacy?
Here.
Good. Kwanise is late, so that gives us seven people attending. That's not a quorum.
Alma is here.
Is that a quorum? Who's here?
Alma.
Oh, good. Okay, that's good. So I've got Alma, DC, Cora, Derek, Gretchen, Rona, Stacy. I do not have Jose, Kimber, Mariah, or Natalie, or any of those on the meeting.
You mean help get off the ground? I can't. But anything on your thing?
Oh, no, no, I'm, 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 I'm about to go down with somebody.
We can start. We have a quorum.
You're going to dinner with somebody?
Yeah.
Someone's talking. We can hear someone talking. Before we go further, I would like to read the land acknowledgement. "Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hopes of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We began this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on ancestral lands as the K'ochtank and the P'kis' Piskatau people. We pay respects to their elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us here today together. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of the Arts Commission." The agenda for this meeting has been circulated to all commissioners. Are there any objections to the agenda as it stands? Hearing no objections, the agenda stands as adopted. I'd like to have an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on October 15th, 2020. Do I have any objections? Hearing no corrections or objections, the minute stands as approved. So I'd like to welcome all of you. And first on the agenda is the public comment period. First up is Chris Nong. Chris? Chris, you're muted. Did you hear me? Well, we can skip Chris and go to Catherine Fernando. Catherine, are you here and ready to present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thanks.
And I got a little message at one point that star six is what unmutes us. I'm not sure if Chris is there and didn't realize that, but um.
Well, welcome back.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, hello, sorry. Catherine, I wanted to give, I wanted to lay the groundwork before we get into all the different things. So, so I just didn't know it was star six. If you wouldn't mind, can I, can I just do the quick, quick intro? And then we'll get into you and Erin and Graham and all the pieces. I didn't know how to commute. I'm sorry.
Absolutely, absolutely, Chris.
All right, thank you. First of all, thank you, Commission. Thank you for, thank you for having us. Thank you for taking the time to, to, to have us testify today. This is, I talked to you guys last month, and this is a little bit background on what I, what I mentioned last month, and it's just a revision of that. So this does, I'm glad that this time we'll be able to hear, not just from me, but from the owners, the musicians, the industry that relies on our music economy. So the background is the five venues have closed since COVID, and many more will close by the end of the year. Our coalition of DC musicians and, and music industry has put forward the Music Venue Relief Act, which has asked the council and the mayor to provide overhead support for venues for the next six to seven months to prevent more venues from closing. When a venue closes, it normally disappears for good and upsets our entire music ecosystem and ladder. We are asking all parts of the government to work with us to find a way to prevent other venues from closing. We have identified the Capital Improvements Fund as part of the facilities and building slot of money is a pot money that we hope the Commission can use to save the day for our music community. Over a month ago, the council voted to let that funding be used for mortgage and rent relief. A couple of weeks ago, Councilmember Nadeau reached out to you all, supporting our act. We are asking for the Commission to vote and set aside a pot of money for this fund to be able to be granted to for-profit venues specifically, who are struggling or include for-profit venues in the people that can apply for the pot of money. We hope that this can happen as soon as possible. We know that these funds have traditionally been used for improvements, large renovations, acquisitions, but I think we can all agree that these funds would be more impactful if they were able to keep venues alive rather than pay for improvements at this point. Small venues are in the, are the largest danger. So this, we're asking for a small and reasonable sum of money, especially for small venues can go a long way. Our small venues specifically are the ones that have been lost and are the ones that regularly book jazz, funk, soul, RV, and local hip-hop acts. Our main act is that a portion of these funds, perhaps $1.8 million, be set aside to jumpstart the Music Revenue Relief Funding for two months until the federal government passes the Save Our Stages Act, which will provide funding for venues to sustain through December 2021. This stimulus funding should pass under either administration, will probably not have, or will pass under the Biden administration, but won't happen for a couple of months. We hope that for these reasons, all, you can all consider using part of the capital improvements funding to save DC venues. I sent everyone our testimony that we, that we wrote up this, earlier this week, and we also have a signature letter supporting the reservation that now has over 1,400 signatures from the community, and we're happy to share that with you all, too. I didn't see this issue marked on the agenda, so I just wanted to highlight that, you know, and, and I hope you all will take seriously what are, what the next presenters are gonna, are gonna say about how we've been, the industry has been affected by COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Catherine?
Thank you. My name is Catherine Ferrando, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm one of the owners of Black Cat, which is a live music venue here in DC. We've been around for 27, over a little more than 27 years now, and we're roughly an 800-capacity venue. It's owned just by myself, my husband Dante, and my father-in-law Bobby Ferrando, who also has deep roots in the DC community. He used to own Food For Thought, a restaurant in Dupont Circle. I'm also speaking for 930 Club tonight and IMP. I spoke with one of their representatives, and they asked, and I shared my written testimony with them, and they asked me to convey their support and agreement, and also just our support of what Chris is asking for. I understand it's far outside the norm to ask for this, for, for assistance for for-profit venues. Normally, we can rely on sales, but we've been closed along with all the other venues in DC since mid-March, and we don't think it's likely that we'll be going to be open for, for quite some time just because of the nature of our, you know, we're a unseated venue, and it just will not be safe for quite a long time. And we are struggling to survive. We have, I submitted written testimony, so hopefully you can see that. I don't want to repeat myself too much, but I guess that one of the main points that I hope you'll consider is that we've seen a lot of changes in our, in the 27 years we've been open. There are, there are more venues now than there were back in the early 90s. But the industry as a whole is also much more dominated by large corporations. And we're really concerned that if we, if this current crisis shuts a lot of the small venues down, we're, we're never gonna have small independent music in DC anymore. It's, it's, if, if anybody opens back up or survives it, it's gonna be the big corporations with the deep pockets, and they just operate in a really different way. They're important in their own way, but they, they rely on, you know, major booking agencies and nationally and internationally touring acts. They are not going to be able to cooperate and foster the local music the way that independent venues can. And independent venues like ourselves are struggling to survive right now. We, we've survived, well, a few others have fallen already, partially because we have been around for a long time, but going without any income and having some costs keep going for, for this long is something that few businesses will be able to survive. So any, if it's possible for you all to set aside some funding for businesses like ourselves, we would deeply appreciate it and, and hope to continue giving back to the community through our, our efforts to encourage the local music scene. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Erin? Erin Myers?
Yes, can you, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for taking some time today to hear how public comments. Chris has outlined earlier in his comments what we have been asking of this body. And you've heard from Catherine, who is an owner, as a musician in this area, who is, some of you are aware of some of the advocacy work that I've done before, keenly familiar with, I think, the approach the city itself had taken among the requests that we had made back in June and July before the budget was passed in order of getting some relief to some of the venues here in Washington, understanding that we were the first of the group to close and more than likely the last of these entities to open. And also understanding that during this time, there's a lot of intersectionality that happens with many of the independent venues between artists, visual arts, many nonprofits use some of these venues to carry out their programs, and many artists that you have all awarded before have used these venues as well to fulfill the grant obligations that you've set forth. Right now, it seems as if the city has given us one particular option, or I'm not going to say excuse, but justification as to why something has not been done beforehand, and that is because they did not receive all of the CARES Money Act that they deemed or they thought would be possible for them to receive. And I think up until the election a few days ago, the thought was that there would be this blue wave that would happen, and in February, more money would be automatically released, and the city may not have to act. But we do see that that's not going to be the case. And we do see that that is even in jeopardy, and we will not know the finality of that until January 5th. In the meantime, that may be too late for many of the venues here. It's gonna be a difficult job and a heavy lift for us to rebuild a music ecosystem that could have been saved, at least in the short run, in this particular moment. I have been contacted by venues within the last two weeks who don't know if they can make it to January 1 without at least some type of relief that could possibly be promised in some way. And that's what we're asking of you, not to do the entire heavy lifting, but to help us with the lift in this particular way so that we can get some relief to the venues as soon as possible so that in doing this, other avenues can be worked out. So if there's some solutions toward relief, we can discover them, and we can help urge the city to do even more, even the private sector. But in this moment, since you are in a unique position, we hope that you consider what we've brought to you today and that you'd consider using this time to help them the best that you can. And I hope that's understood, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erin. I have a question for all three of you. Last time we heard from you, it sounded like you needed quite a lot of money even to get to January. I'm just curious what the least amount of money you think you would need to get to hobble on along.
So, so I, I don't, well, the, the way we, the way we calculated it was that, given, given, given the amount of money that, that the, the Music Venue Relief Act would take, we're, we're thinking that that, that's gonna come in around 5 million, a little over 5 million. If we can do, and that's for six to seven months, if we can, if we can have two months of that allocated, which I think in calculations come out to around 1.8 million, you know, or in, in that realm, I think that would be, you know, that would be helpful, and that would help a number of venues get through, you know, you know. Again, and, and let me, let me say that the legislation did not cover, is not covering full rent. You know, we were talking about cap to $15,000 a month per venue and for the biggest venue. So it's, it's, it's our legislation doesn't even, is not even gonna save venues. It's gonna help ease the pain. I mean, I think the Black Cat's $30,000 a month, $20,000, $25,000 a month operating cost. So clearly it's not covering all of their costs. Right?
It's around, it's between 20 and 25, yeah.
Okay. So, so.
And we don't, we have a mortgage rather than rent, which we're already in a better position than some, but it's, it's still a struggle. But I think people who have rent have, are facing even higher costs.
Right. And so, so that's the amount, that's the amount, that's the amount, the range, the ballpark we're looking for. I don't know if Erin has something to add. And Graham is also on the testimony list. He, he's a sound engineer, and he could talk to how that whole sector of the music community is also really impacted by all this.
And, and I would just add that, you know, I mean, honestly, every, every bit helps. We've done a combination of we, we, we got PPP money. We've applied for any local grant we've been able to. We, we got a $4,000 grant at one point. Like, and any little piece we have, we, it basically lets us help our, the, our sort of key employees and just survive another month. So it's, wow, you know, it'd be wonderful to have everything covered, and anything helps.
I think, and to answer the question, I believe, between one, I, I think we had figured out between 1.3 to 1.8 million, Chris? But I think 1.8 is, I think 1.8 is where we landed at because we are unsure of if there have been some clubs that have quietly closed down or who would not be able to be in position to receive the relief. We were thinking that if we could get the first two months of this covered, that would give us time to work out further solutions with the city and possibly the private sector to do the remaining. But that would get people at least through or into the new year so that we could have some, some breathing room because many of these venues don't have a mortgage. They're actually renting, and there's not been any relief for some of them at all.
I hear what you're saying. I appreciate giving a little more detail. We'll address this a little bit later, but thank you all for coming and talking to us.
I think there, I think Graham is also on the, on the testimony list for today. Graham Smith-White?
Oh, I didn't know that. Is there someone else? Go ahead, Graham. Starham is here.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you. So as Chris shared, I am a, I'm a professional sound engineer as well as a professional musician, and I work with a handful of music venues in the city, both in the capacity of building new, new music venues, businesses that have decided they want to host music and installing the equipment and consulting on layout and design and that sort of stuff, as well as operating this equipment for existing venues. And I think I just want to share some of the, the context for what losing these venues means in, in relation to what this grant money is typically associated with and how it relates to this particular ask. As Sandra shared, there's a rent and property overhead, and that's always a major expense. A big, a big expense that gets overlooked a lot of times in considering these scenarios is the upfront cost for the equipment that is required to put on professional concert. And that can be rather expensive. Easily, one of the venues that I've worked with has $300,000 worth of sound and light in addition to. I built a new system for another venue that had, that as part of their acquisition of a space had some existing equipment, so we even got to reuse stuff, and it was still $100,000 in, in installation costs. In addition to that, there's regularly, each concert employs generally about four or more people from a ticket taker, box office, a sound engineer, a lights person, and somebody to oversee all that and just keep time and make things running. That's your, like, bare minimum size of a team, of people that are working. So we're talking about, in addition to the artists and the musicians, sorry, the artists and the venue space itself, we're talking, we're looking at this ancillary community of professionals that works and derives their income from these spaces, which will, will be lost if these venues go away.
You know, it's really killing me, my sense in the music business. And guys started actually at Black Cat. So I, I really understand what these venues mean to the community, and it really is heartbreaking to hear your story. I'm sorry that things are so tough for both you all and for the community. Thank you for coming to talk to us.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the public part? So my report is that within the last month, a few weeks ago, there was a hearing in front of the council and in front of the committee, the whole, and we have some returning commissioners who testified. That would be Kwanise Floyd, Mariah Rooney, Stacy Lee Banks. Our, sorry. Haran also is ED, testified in front of the committee. And we have three new commissioners who testified, Hector Torres, Carla Sims, Carla Sims, and Maggie Fitzpatrick. We will be walking, welcoming them at the next meeting, I suspect. They're still waiting to be sworn in. But they all three were, well, everybody was so impressive. Everybody has such a serious arts background. They some, the both returning and the new, I feel, are gonna make a very complex, interesting, wonderful commission. So I was real excited to see that happen. Another thing that happened recently is that there's the dedication of the DC Government Building, 441 Fourth Street. It's been renamed the Marion S. Berry Jr. Building. It's a wonderful big sign out in front before you walk in. There is a plan to put in some artwork in the lobby that will both depict his life and his accomplishments. We look forward to knowing the scope and particulars of what that's going to be. In the meantime, we, as a Commission, will be working with the Department of General Services to finalize the details for removing the artwork that is there currently, which does not have anything to do with Marion Berry. So it's not appropriate. So just wanted to give you all a heads up about that project. That's it for me. Unless there are any questions, I'll turn to the agenda and call on Haran. Okay, Haran, you're up.
Sorry. Sorry. Sorry, yeah. My computer is on the blink today. I apologize. Good evening, everyone. I will, I also want to share sort of my sadness to, about the fate of our music venues. We'll be talking about it a little bit later, but just, you know, thank you for making that time to come in and talk to us. And it is a tough time for all. So we share in the, I share in the sympathy of what's going on. I'll do a quick through my report. You've mentioned a couple of things off of it, Kay, but just agency updates. The, we've been, the agency as a whole has had a couple of technology-focused workshops that we've done and training sessions in the realm of communication and collaborative work environment. We're looking to update some of our technology applications, what we use in the office. It's especially necessary now that we're working remotely, that we have good sort of project management software. So we're looking to work through some of that and, and get some more training and facilitated conversation around team building and agency, just, you know, staff training to, to build a collaborative work environment. So this is the beginning, and there will be more next year. As it relates to agency hires, we've had two staff members change their roles at the agency. Lauren Dukas-Clover, who was formerly, both were, were department heads. Lauren headed the Public Art Department, and she's now a supervisory program manager of public art. Dr. Jeffrey Scott, who was formerly our Arts Communications Specialist, is now in the role of Chief of Staff. Both are new positions. They were, they've been created as Management Supervisory Service or MSS positions. And what's significant about this is the fact that they will now be able to assist in reviewing annual staff performance and working closely with their teams to set goals. And they'll be doing some of the sort of admin tasks of approving leave requests and such. So this, this is a switch from how the agency functioned before. We're about 20-plus employees reported to the former Deputy Director, Michael Bigley. This now allows us to sort of build a better structure for the agency and a better sort of, better efficiency for the work that we're doing. So this is a good thing, and, and we're happy to welcome our two staff members into, in their new roles. You mentioned, Kay, that our commissioners are, a few of our are coming back through and have some new commissioners joining. I say welcome and welcome back to all. My appointment has also now moved from, has been approved, I guess, to move from Acting Executive Director to Executive Director. So I can stop with the acting now, it seems, which is a good thing. Go ceremony as well soon. The other big piece to share, it's still sort of in, it's nasal. The other big piece to share, it's still sort of in its nascent preliminary stage, but we've, I know I have talked a lot at different points about community engagement and, you know, cog, kind of working closely with community to showcase artists and to make resources available that are not grants-related. We are planning and talking interdepartmentally, having conversations within the agency, and we hope to have something to present to the commission soon. And it's really an effort to address something that the Center for Effective Philanthropy pointed out, the survey and study that we had done a couple of years ago, which indicated that grantees would feel a better sense of connection to the agency if more programming were done and more outreach was, happened. So this is in response to that, and we hope to have a good plan with several different tracks that would launch sometime in January and happen through August, September or August of next year. And the last thing is, I was happy to be a part of the Marion Berry dedication, the building dedication as well. It was really good to hear his, you know, people testify to his legacy and his life. And we look forward to working together to get the artwork removed and possibly a new mural put into place. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Haran. Does anyone have any questions for Haran? Then I'll call on Cece for a finance report.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I'm, my video's off because I'm having some internet woes as well, so hopefully this will help with that. So as part of the packet of information, thank you, Brian, for putting together some of the budget materials. The committee met a few weeks ago, and I guess the biggest news right now is that our $38 million budget has been re... Help me out. What is the word I'm thinking of?
Reduced?
Reduced, yes, but has reduced, has been reduced currently.
Reforecast, reforecast.
Reforecasted to $34 million pending OCFO and what else they decide to do as we move into the winter months and seeing how COVID affects the city. Are there any questions? And that's really the biggest news. I know that obviously with the reduced budget forecast, the staff is working to make it the subsequent adjustments. But if there are any questions, or Brian, you want to add anything? That's really the biggest news that we have right now.
Right. So, great. Thanks, Cece. The only thing I'd like to add at this point in time as well is in addition to the reforecasting of the budget, we are in the beginning stages of doing the issuance of the fiscal year '21 grants. So to all of the grantees or awardees that are awaiting their awards, please be sure to contact CAAH, in particular your grant management specialist that's assigned to your grant, to get all of your necessary documents. And we'd like to get the first round of payments out as soon as possible.
I'm sure that they welcome that statement, so I'm always hearing about how late we are, so let's do it as best as we can. Any comments on finance from anyone? Someone we can hear typing? Thanks. Public Art Committee report.
Thank you, Kay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At its November 5th meeting, the Public Art Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the Selected Art Bank works. I'm going to ask Lauren to guide us through the selection process and outcome.
Thank you, Alma. Well, you see before you, and you were mailed the summary of the allocated budget amounts over the last several years. For this year, there were two panels. The grants manager is Sarah Gordon, and she's going to walk through the spreadsheet when we get to that point. But just to reiterate our process, all eligible applicants, applications were reviewed and scored by the panelists in an online review of portfolios on a scale of one to 10. 149 applications were discussed during the first round of two virtual panels. From those, the top-scoring 109 artworks were selected to enter a final onsite round of review. During the final round of review, panelists assessed the artwork in person for quality, longevity, and visual impact. And please note that all virtual panel, I'm sorry, that the in-person review was following all directed protocols by the mayor, and most of these panelists came in individually, so I want to hand it to the staff, my staff, who, you know, spent time to allow the panelists to come in and to view the work individually as opposed to as a group as we normally do, just in the, you know, abundance of caution. This was followed by virtual panel and discussion to review what they had seen in person. The allocation of funds recommends 60 works of art of various amounts from 45 applicants for a total of $229,583. There were 15 new artists that will be new to the Art Bank collection. And you'll see below that, Patrick, if you want to scroll down a little bit, you can see the distribution across the wards. So if there are no questions on that, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah and Patrick, perhaps you can put this.
Lauren, I have, Lauren, I have a question. I'd like to see the artwork. I don't, there's no way I can just look at numbers and assume that we can, I don't see how a commission can vote for artwork that we don't see. That's an oxymoron to me. I don't, literally don't see how that's feasible. I expected to get this artwork sent to us so we could see slides. We didn't have to have names of people, but we could have seen the slides of what you're talking about in advance. But I really, we've done this in the past. Alma has presented the artwork many, many, for many years. I really don't see why we're going through this with just numbers without any works. I just think it's a...
I can respond to that, or Kay can respond to that, or Alma can respond to it. They were not shown last year. The three years that I've been here, they were not shown.
They were shown a full... Okay, I, how do we vote on artwork? It's, how, artwork is something you see. How could we vote on something we don't see? Seriously.
Rona, it's along the lines of when we vote for grants and we do it blind.
Public art has always been separate from the grants process. It is not part of grants. The Grants Committee really is not, this is a public art committee. That's my point of view, Alma. You have presented those artworks. We've seen it, then all of a sudden it stopped. I don't see...
Rona?
I have everyone talking at me. Can I just finish my statement?
Alma, we can't hear you. Can you speak a little louder?
Well, I just feel that this is totally unnecessary. We do not vote on grants this way. This is a grant to an individual artist, and I don't think there's any other way of looking at it.
That's not true. We vote on grants based on, grants are done by a panel that's part of the grant process. Public art is always...
Public art is also done by panels. Just the same. It's the parallel procedure that panels review, and then the committees endorse, and then they bring it to the commission for a further endorsement and the specific...
Is public art, is public art part of our Grants Committee process that reports to the Grants Committee?
No, but it's on a parallel track.
No, it's not. Okay, so don't, don't...
Rona, Rona, don't say no. I'm saying that this has been the policy for a couple of years. And there's a reason for it.
I think when you do an art ed grant or a GOS grant, we don't, there's nothing to visually see. I've asked for these slides. I don't see why they weren't sent to me. I'm sorry, I don't see why they weren't sent. Can you give me a reason why this commission, this group of commissioners cannot see the artwork? I just...
The artists, the artists have not been notified, I don't think.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Lauren?
The artists have not been notified. It's no different than if we sent you details on the different arts organizations that are applying for money. We don't send out their grants. We don't send out their particulars. We make recommendations based on a committee's recommendation, based on a panel, based on the staff, everyone's recommendation.
Okay, I have asked to see the artwork. Why couldn't I? If I could, I personally asked to see this. Why couldn't? I see the artwork so I can vote intelligently, and if other commissioners deemed it necessary... We're not talking Grants, which is 25 written pages. We're talking about a piece of art you visually see. So you're telling us to trust a panel that we don't know anything about, that's not inside our panel process? It's parallel tracked, as you said, and I agree to that.
It is part of our panel process. It is.
It's a parallel track, and I agree with that.
Rona, if you don't want to vote, it'll pass you. This is the policy.
I just don't see why I couldn't get the slides. Why couldn't I just see what the artwork was like?
Rona, this is an Araya. You know, there's been a huge work that was put into having the panels come in and take a look and put the panel is really for, to make recommendations for this artwork. And it's been going on for months and months and months at this point. And the whole point of it is so that we as commissioners do get involved so that we can have a, the ability to have no conflict of interest. And I know you understand that, but I'm just saying, I don't think that at this point it needs to be revisited and opened all the way up again after the panel has spent months and months and months reviewing this as experts.
No, I'm asking not for the, all the, I'm not asking to reopen anything. I'm saying I just wanted to see the slides the panel picked. That's it. I'm agreeing with you, and we're not talking conflict of interest or anything. We're talking blank slides without names of what the panel picked. I'm relying on this panel. You have outside people on your panel that are outside the commission as well?
Yes, absolutely.
No, no. Mariah, she's asking if we have outside people on our committee. No. No, our committee is made up of commissioners. The panel is made up of outside people.
That's what I'm asking. The panel is outside people. And that's always this. Okay.
Always.
Fine. Why can't, if I asked to see the slides, no one has answered my question. We're wasting time. Why couldn't I see the slides that the panel picked? I'm not asking to review them. I'm saying what the panel picked anonymously. Why couldn't a few commissioners, if they wanted, see the slides? I haven't heard a reason, because it, you're telling me because it is the way it is, the way it is. So someone has a recommendation to make things better, and you're telling me no?
Maybe it's not a good idea for Rona to join Public Art.
Rona, I don't think anybody is telling you. I sort of am wondering where this is coming from.
I asked this before, Alma.
Excuse me, it's my turn.
No, you interrupted me.
You've not asked me for anything.
I have asked Kay for this, and I understood you had...
You're interrupting me.
I asked Kay for this, and...
When? When did you ask me for this? There are too many people talking.
I can't hear. Never mind. I got it. You're not going to give the information. Okay, it's wasting every...
Rona, I am sure that, I am sure that all of these works can be put together in a slide format for perhaps the next board meeting, if you would like that. But we need approval of the Art Bank works today. The committee...
Do you want to make a motion for a vote, Alma?
Kay, can I just make a quick statement? This is Cece.
Let's get the vote on the table and then we'll discuss it some more.
Okay. Yep.
Alma, do you want to move that we accept the panel's recommendation and the staff and the committee's recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Again.
Yep, second.
Okay, discussion. Cece, you wanted to speak up?
Yeah, I just wanted to support what Rona is saying because I disagree that it's, that we've never seen the works before. When we were in the, when we were meeting in the office, the works were always on view for us to see. And in the times that we weren't able to see all the works, like we were given a slideshow. So I don't know where this, we've never shown the works before is coming from. Because I recall that we've always been able to see the works in advance. We didn't, we didn't comment on them or anything, but we were able to at least have a visual. And I think there is slightly, there is a bit of difference between some of our other grants because we are not just grant, we're giving grants, but we're also purchasing these works. They become part of the Art Bank of the, of the commission. There was a whole fight about it earlier in the year about who actually controls, you know, the care of the, of these artworks. So I think it's a little bit misleading to say it's exactly like some of our other grants because it's not like these are, we're talking about programs versus actual physical works of art. And I just don't think it's unreasonable to ask to be able to see them. So I just wanted to make that statement. I know we don't really have the time to do that, but I, I think that in future, I would ask that we get to see the works before we vote because this isn't something that we can just, you know, this isn't a program. This is a, we're paying for works of art. We should be able to see them. Thanks.
Cece, I just wanted... Okay, go ahead, Alma.
It's a whole different year because of COVID. And as you say, we often will get a chance, we'll be able to see them in the lobby of the, and we just, we're not, we literally had to come in and see them and make special arrangements. Our committee did because of COVID. So I think you're right, going forward, this has not been offered. But it was the best way that we could figure out how to work it because of the situation that we were in.
Thank you, Mariah. I hear that, but I think, yes, and I think my only response was that, understanding that this year is unusual and out of the norm, but it is not out of the, you know, realm of what was done to, before to see the work. So I think saying that to Rona is just not true and that hopefully, hopefully in future, we can, we can do that.
That's what we were saying, Cece.
No, when she asked, can we, when she asked, she asked if we could see the works and people said we've never shown the works before, that, that wasn't true.
We didn't say never. It's been a couple of years. The policy changed. We didn't say never. Certainly, we used to, and the policy changed.
But Kay also...
Hey, hey, may I, oh, sorry.
One second, Jose. One second. Alma, go ahead.
I think there's some confusion. The artworks that were up before were from the Artist Fellowship Program. Some of those were the same, but the majority of them were not. And they were what were in the gallery. I'm not, I'm not sure any of this was put up. I know that it wasn't put up prior to the panel reviewing it because the first time these things were unrolled many times was in front of the panel. So I feel very comfortable saying these works were not shown in the gallery. You're thinking about the Artist Fellowship works.
I wasn't speaking about the gallery, just to be clear, so it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It's fine. We under...
Jose, may I call on you? And everyone, let me call on you. We're starting to talk over each other. I can see faces. I'd like to be the one to call on people. Go ahead, Jose.
I think we can raise our hand. Okay, maybe we are having a confusion. I'm part of the Public Art Committee. I'm part of the Public Art Committee, and I know the hard work and that it had to be two panels and that we have been, the staff has been incredible. I understand what Rona is asking. The one thing that I think the confusion might be, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have shown the artwork that has been purchased, but it was after it got voted on the following meeting when we used to meet at the building. That's what I remember. Yes, it was shown, but it was shown afterwards. I don't know, Lauren, Alma, if I'm wrong, but I know it got shown, but afterwards, not during the process because we don't want somebody recognizing the work and trying to dissuade. One thing is to just take an overall look. This is what we're purchasing, no background, and, and then just vote on it. But believe me, those panelists, I sat through hours with my panel, and I know Mariah did the others and Alma. I mean, believe me, those panelists were opinionated. My God, I was, I was impressed, and they didn't leave anything. So we have a wonderful diversity in it. It is incredible what has been chosen. So my heart is open to what we are going to get for the bank. So, thank you.
Does anyone else have anything they want to say before we vote? Alma?
No, I was going to call the question.
Okay.
I'm calling, Cora.
Then Alma, would you like to vote?
I vote yes.
Cece?
I'm going to abstain.
Cora? Cora, you're muted.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Would you like to vote?
I got, I got it. What are we voting on?
We're voting on the recommendation of art to purchase for our Art Bank.
To do what?
It's a recommend, the Public Arts Committee is recommending that we vote on purchasing paintings for the Art Bank that have been vetted by a panel, the staff, and the committee.
Kay, I'll abstain because I don't understand it.
Derek? Derek?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Gretchen?
You have to... Yes.
Thank you. Jose?
Yes.
Kimber, did you come on?
I support it.
Thank you. Mariah?
Yes.
Is Mary Ann on at this time? Natalie? Rona?
No.
Stacy?
Yes.
Quanise, have you joined us?
Quanise is out of town. She's not joining the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. She let me know that she might come late. Okay, the majority says yes, so it is passed. Thank you very much. Thank you.
This is Quanise. Sorry, I was on the phone, so I abstain.
My bad, sorry.
Thank you, Quanise. Okay, next up is the Grants Committee report. Gretchen?
Okay, before we get into Fab, David, I'd like you to talk just a little bit about Upstart, just a couple of sentences in terms of what we're doing with Upstart, and then I'll jump into Fab.
Sure, Gretchen. So as was mentioned earlier, we were asked to work with a restricted budget this year, so we went back to see where we could pare down some of our programs. Upstart was scheduled to begin a two-year cycle this year, and we had yet to secure a contractor for the new cycle. So it got us to thinking about how we could spread the wealth of Upstart across all of our grantees. Usually, that program is limited to participation by six organizations. So what we are doing is we are curating a speaker series that will include keynotes, panels, and so on around topic areas that we've identified as, as being important for the broader community. And so two of our, my colleagues, Benjamin and Devon, are taking the lead on that as we move forward.
Well, it's wonderful. Thank you, David. I just wanted everyone to know that Upstart is still first and foremost in our minds, and we are going to retool it a bit. We'll come out with something in the next month or so. Okay, on the screen, you see the FY21 Facilities and Buildings Relief, Fab R, we're calling it, Grant Proposal. As many of you know, we already released Fab, the traditional Fab. So this is the component of Fab that addresses the rent and mortgage relief that the council amended, when the council amended the bill. I don't know how many of you can see it, so I'm going to do something I hate doing, which is reading something that you can see on the screen. But CAH staff recommends adding a new cycle to the FY21 Facilities and Buildings Program to provide emergency support to DC-based nonprofit arts and humanities organizations at risk of, to prevent loss of the arts and humanities in the district. The FY21, I'm going to call it Fab R program, will pay up to 50% of an eligible organization's rent, mortgage, or lease payments for 12 months with an abbreviated application and objective pass fail criteria. We recommend that Fab R be announced as soon as possible. We're hoping we can get that out in the next month or so, ideally before the FY21 Traditional Awards are announced, which will be in late January. So we really are trying to hope to get this out in December. Fab R awardees would be announced in March or April of 2021. For the Fab R budget, we'll issue a no-match awards. That's very critical. And we've been doing that with most of our grants, if not all of our grants through this year. We're not requiring a match on the, on the part of the awardee. No-match awards covering 50% of an organization's rent, lease, or mortgage payments during the FY21 fiscal year, up to $40,000. We propose allocating $2 million of the 4.450 million Fab budget to Fab R. That's $4,450,000 of the Fab budget to Fab R. This would permit 50 awards at the maximum amount, though many organizations will be applying for lower amounts, allowing opportunity for even more awards. Nonprofit arts and humanities organizations committed to remaining in DC that have severely limited revenue as a result of COVID-19 and are concerned about financial stability. Fab R is for organizations receiving less than a total of $200,000 in non-Fab awards from CAH and FY21, and receiving no more than $60,000 in FY21 Traditional Fab. Fab R applications should be no-burden grants modeled after the FY20 NEA cares. And these were very short, one-page application templates. And this is so that we can expedite the application, review, and reporting process. We also plan in the, maybe in the next four or five months, to launch a general operating relief program for individual artists in the late winter spring, using funds from the Arts and Humanities allocation of the grant's budget. This Fab R that we're talking about now is for organizations. So of course, we are very attuned to the needs of individuals. So we're going to be looking at launching the same kind of thing through the Arts and Humanities piece for individuals. Kay, would you like to?
Call a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, was it seconded yet?
No. Okay. I'm going to move, I'm going to officially move that the description of the Fab R Grant Proposal that I just read to everyone be adopted as Fab R for FY21.
Okay, is there a second?
I second Stacy.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. So, we'll call the roll. Alma?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Cora?
Absolutely.
Derek?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Mariah?
Us, yes.
Is Mary Ann with us? Natalie?
Hmm?
Rona?
Yes.
With what?
Stacy?
Would you refill that one?
Yes. Cora, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's anonymous. I mean, unanimous, not anonymous, unanimous. Okay, Gretchen, you've got your vote.
Thank you, everyone. Now, this last piece, it's really, I'm having a hard time to, because it was the unanimous vote by the Grants Committee, but it's a two-part to it. The second part, I'm going to let Huron address a little bit. But the Grants Committee did meet earlier today, as a matter of fact, to discuss the availability of grants to for-profit organizations. The appropriate grant category would be the facilities and buildings allocation. And currently, the budget is not available to provide grants to both nonprofit and for-profit entities. As of September 30th, our revised revenue forecast includes an anticipated $4.6 million reduction in the collection of sales tax revenues. That really hit us hard. CAH has already made reductions to its budget in response to this anticipated reduction, and it's possible that additional reductions may still be necessary. So we're going to have to look at this as we go, month by month by month. So because of that, be it resolved that the Grants Committee does not recommend the commission award Fab Mortgage and Relief Grants to for-profit entities. The caveat to this, and I'm going to repeat the resolution again, is that I do know that our executive director, Huron, has already reached out to other organizations within the District of Columbia Government, not organizations necessarily, but departments that can address the for-profit entities. And some of these are DSOBD, which is under DIMPAD, which is Events DC. I mean, there's several of them that I know she's reached out to, and to Angie Gates' organization. So she can comment on that afterwards. But be it resolved that the Grants Committee does not recommend the commission award Fab Mortgage and Relief Grants to for-profit entities. Do you need to call for the vote? That's the motion.
Yeah. Is there a motion that we contain our grants to for, non-for-profit? How do you want to put that, Gretchen? Say it one more time.
The Grants Committee does not recommend the commission award Fab Mortgage and Relief Grants to for-profit entities.
Okay, so we're looking for support for that. Thank you, Alma. In a second. Is there a second to that?
I second.
Thank you, Jose. I'll call the vote. Alma?
Yes.
Cece?
I'm going to abstain on this one, too.
Cora?
Yes. Am I voting the right way? Yes.
I don't know. It's up to you.
Yes, I'm voting the right way. Gretchen is nodding. I'm sorry, I got distracted.
Derek?
It's Derek.
Derek?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Mariah? Mariah? Thank you. Rona?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Okay, then we decided not to give money to for-profit organizations. Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen, for that work.
Kate, can we maybe ask Huron to speak a little bit about the outreach? Or would you?
Absolutely, because I know that despite the vote, and I think the consideration was our, sort of respecting our history and trying to make the most impact with the few dollars we have for the rest of the year. We care. We care very much. Huron, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, sure. I, this is an effort to, you know, sort of not turn a deaf ear to the needs. The needs are vast, and we are all affected when, when our, you know, these venues are being forced to shut down. Because, you know, as the speakers testified, it's hard to rebuild an ecosystem so unique as we've had and enjoyed over the years here in the district. I am committed to reaching out to our sister agencies. I've done a preliminary, sort of had a preliminary, preliminary conversation with Director Angie Gates over at OCTFME. She's had conversations with our cluster agencies, including DIMPAD, to see what else is possible. I wish I had more to report. I can only say that we, we've had that one preliminary conversation, and we're committed to seeing what possible solutions might exist and what monies we can scrounge around. None of the budgets have this allocated, as, as we all know. We're dealing with our own, you know, budgetary shortfalls because of these forecasts and adjusting accordingly. So we're, we're, there is no definite answer except the will to, you know, try and do something and not turn a deaf ear. So I'll be reporting soon on, on more, hopefully, from, from sort of a group conversation and, and seeing how much can be, you know, sort of put into a pot that can roll out as support for our for-profits, arts organizations.
Are there any other comments at this moment? Is there any new business?
Yes, I have new business.
Okay.
Can I speak? I'm sorry, I had on mute. I'm sorry, can I speak?
Yes, yes.
I would like to make sure that from now on, all public art is, pictures and slides are shown to commissioners two days before it has to be brought for a vote. We are not, not, not everything that the committee voted on, just for clarification. I want to see what the committee voted on. I'm not asking to redo their work. So I want everyone who said that I am, that's not what I'm saying. What Cece and I are saying is that we want the ability to view artworks that is, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars paying for so we can see it like we have done in the past. That's it. And I'd like to have that brought up for a vote. And I cannot see why we cannot do this. There's no good reason. And if one or two commissioners want to see it, then they should be the ones allowed to see it.
Rona, it's going to go up on our website, two shows that will be up starting tomorrow.
No, I'm talking before the vote day, before we give hundreds of thousands of dollars, not after.
Rona, there are some considerations. I think that this should go back to the Public Art Committee, and they can present their policy.
That's not their decision to be made in secret. This should be voted on by commissioners. This is not an out, the Public Art Committee is not all commissioners, as is the right way. So how could they vote on it for us?
They can present a policy that can be voted on, Rona. Not...
I just want to ask the question. Can I just ask the question before you speak out?
No, no, Cora, just a second. Alma, her head up. Cora? Cora, you can, but let me call on you. Alma had her head up. I'm going to call on Alma first. Yes.
Rona, I think you're mistaken. All the members of the Public Art Committee are current commissioners.
No, I said panel, not committee.
Well, that's not what came out of your mouth, but go ahead.
Cora, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just trying to understand what the big deal is about seeing the art. Do you want to see the artwork is the problem? I don't understand. I mean, that's why I'm saying I'm confused. Maybe it's something I'm missing, but that seems like such a fundamental thing. I don't, what's the issue?
I would talk to this, but probably, Lauren or... Do you want to speak to it, Lauren at all? You don't have to.
Did you call my name?
I think part, part of Cora and Rona and everyone, I think part of the situation has to do with the fact that before, when we saw it, we were in a room and it was contained. Our meeting...
spend hundreds of thousands of dollars? That's it.
Rona, I take it the new business is you would like to propose a new policy, and we will take that back and consider it and bring it to the next meeting.
Who's going to take it under consideration?
The Public Art Committee. It's their purview to do that. I don't think that this is something to vote on right this second. I mean, if you want to put, if you want to bring it to a vote, I guess I can, you can put something, make a move, motion, and it can be seconded, and we can vote. Is that what you want to do?
Kay, if I can't get your support on letting, as chair, of letting commissioners see the art, what can I say? Come on, I'm not going to, this is, it makes no sense to me. It just doesn't. You're fighting against something that makes no sense. I just intellectually can't understand if a few commissioners want to see what, how we spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's it.
Rona, what difference does it make whether you see it before or after, if you are not going to be judging the art?
What difference? I'm sorry, Alma. We're spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
But, Rona, a panel has reviewed this.
Okay, okay, okay. I got it. I got it. I understand your point of view. You want to keep this secret? You want to hold it in? You don't want to let, a panel reviews art that you see with your eyes. You have a group of people looking at it. I can't, and I understand that. Why are you opposing commissioners seeing it? What, if I don't agree with the panel's recommendation, as a commissioner, I have a fiduciary duty to speak up. You're, you're taking that duty away. I can't...
Gretchen, I'll call on you.
Thank you. I have a question for clarification, Rona. Are you suggesting that the commissioners be able to see the artwork that was voted upon, not all of the?
Yes, yes, just that was voted on, that's all.
Let me finish, please. The artwork that was voted upon and approved by the panel.
That's what I've said four times, yes. Maybe five.
Privately, privately, not in this meeting, so...
No, two days before, Jose. Two days before.
Privately, not at the meeting.
No, not at the meeting, privately.
I wish I had a gavel. Listen, when you first started talking about this, Rona, it seemed very, to me, I thought you were saying you wanted to see it now, before we voted. If I misunderstood that, I'm sorry. If next year, before we vote on it, you want to see it privately before the meeting, perhaps that's not a problem at all. But putting it publicly at this meeting was a problem, and the policy was not to have it in a public forum like this as we were voting on it.
I, I agree with that.
And when we do the other things blind. So this can be considered and will be, and it's a different thing than I think, I certainly understood you asking, and maybe some other people with misunderstanding, too. There's no reason, we can certainly come back to you and discuss the next time we have a public art bank that you could see it privately ahead of time, if you just happen to want to see it before the vote. I think that, yeah, go ahead.
I, I think it's also important to note that the Public Art Committee did recommend forwarding the panel selections to the full commission. So I, I think for members of the commission who are not on public art, to start judging third-hand, after we've been through panel, we've been through public art committee, now we're going to individuals, our tastes are all different. And I, a burden that is unnecessary if Rona is recommending that a commissioner can vote down a selection.
She did not say that. She did not say that, Alma.
No, she said she just wanted to see it, but then why not see it after the vote? This is something that I think we are spinning, going in circles. I think we should take this to committee and discuss a little bit more. But I appreciate you saying, Alma, because it's behind the reason that you did not see that.
Exactly.
Kay, we're being asked to vote, Cece, we're being asked to vote on something sight unseen that is largely a visual vote, and Rona said nothing.
That's exactly right. That is, you're being asked to do it based on other people with expertise who have spent a lot of time voting on it and making recommendation.
But there's been no, there's been no mention about voting down anything. It's simply for us to do our due diligence and say, okay, we've seen the works that have been approved. I don't think that's unreasonable.
That was not what I heard Rona say when she was talking about we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars.
You all, it's late, and we're going around in circles. I don't think we're going to decide anything right this second. And I would like to move that this discussion go to the committee, and a policy be put forth and sent to the before, and that we not continue discussing this right now.
I would like to second that.
I'm not trying to shut it off. I think we're going in circles.
I thirded.
If there's a particular motion that we want to vote on, that's different.
Do we need to vote to end the discussion, Kay? I heard you had a motion. I seconded it, as to Jose.
As to moving on? Who is that?
That's Kimber, Kimber and Cameron.
I mean, is there, is there other, the meeting is supposed to go till seven, and we still have 15 minutes. So if you're, are you trying to cut the discussion off because you don't want to have it, or because there's other business? I mean, I...
No, 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 I just, no, I'm not. We can keep talking about what you want. I mean, sure.
I would just, I mean, I would just like to say for the record that the, the Public Art Committee overruled the panel at the last meeting in their recommendation. So for them to then come back and say, you know, or to, to basically accuse Rona and I when asking the question to see the work that we are not trusting the panel is frankly a little bit hypocritical. So I think it's totally fair to ask the question to see the work of the committee when they've already set a precedent for going against what a, what a panel has decided. I think that's where I'm personally coming from. So again, just to support what Rona said, she's not asking to vote down anything. She's not asking to go against a panel discussion. It's perfectly fair to say, can we just see something before we vote on it, when it's a completely visual grant? That's it.
I'm calling on Gretchen. Would this proposal suffice if the Public Art Committee, and I think this is what Rona was saying, but I just want to make sure, if the Public Art Committee circulated to the commission before the meeting, the actual photos of the actual awardees, meaning the art pieces, that actually had gone through the panel and were voted upon and were the finalists that they're proposing? Would that suffice, Rona?
That's exactly what I'm saying, Gretchen, is that's exactly, I'm not looking to redo their work. But if we, if, if commissioners have an opinion about the quality of the work, as Cece mentioned, the committee overruled the panel, we have a right to say, ask a question, how this happened? What do you think? We, we're entitled to a discussion, and we're entitled to vote yes or no based on fact, not what someone else tells us we should see. This is not a grant. So I agree exactly what you're saying. I agree with that.
Kay, can that be a motion, or what should we do?
She has every right to make a motion to that.
Oh, okay. I make a motion. Sorry, Jose's racing his head.
Jose, you're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry.
Jose, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. I guess what I want to make sure is, and I, I do understand that we all might have opinion, because even in some stuff that's been chosen, obviously, like Gretchen said, we all, and Alma has said it, we all have different tastes. So it is a matter of wanting to see, of the commissioners being allowed, which is fair, see it before we vote, two days privately, only you. But there has to be the caveat that we are not going to be changing what has been made as a selection. You know, we're just going to be...
I'm not asking that, Jose. I'm not asking. I'm just saying, what your committee did, we want to see, that's all. We're not asking, but I can vote yes or no after I see what I can see.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
Well, that's in your face judging it. And in any case, Gretchen, is there a second to this motion?
I second.
Thank you. So did we all understand the motion? Do God.
Can you repeat it, Gretchen? To make sure it is clear that it would be like two days before the meeting, that it is not to judge whatever has been chosen, it's just as your information.
No, no, Jose, it's not to re-judge what the committee has picked out. It's to vote out and judge if we want to vote. I want to be able to judge for myself whether I vote yes or no, but I'm, as Gretchen said, I'm not looking to change the selections. So I'm asking to see the selections, so I can make an opinion whether I want to vote yes or no. That's the motion.
Okay, to restate the motion, the motion is that the Public Art Committee sends to the full commission only, seven days before the meeting, and we can reword this, the winners of the, the grant.
Art Bank.
Art Bank.
Prior to the meeting, Gretchen, I don't want to put seven days in there.
Okay, two days prior to the meeting, send photographs of the winners of the Art Bank grant.
Right.
For review.
Is there a second?
Well, for review, for review. For our review.
Yes.
For our review.
Right.
Jeff, did you get all that? Is there a second?
Jose seconded it.
Well, I don't know. This was restated.
I'm now restating, I personally do not stand in favor of that we can judge it, but if it's just for your opinion to vote on it, the yes or no, that is fine. But I don't want to change the work that they have done. So we're there to only take a look at the artwork and, and just see it, and then vote in favor or not. But we're not going to restart the work, which you made clear that's not what you want, but you will abstain. You don't like certain works.
No, if I don't like it, I can, if I don't like the works, I can say no, or I can ask a question of clarification. That's what a commission's fiduciary duty is.
That's, it's the same thing. She can still vote no, and the rest of the commissioners could vote yes or no, whichever they want to, but it gives her the right to vote no if she personally wants to do that.
Is there any more discussion?
No. Call a question.
I will. Alma, how do you vote?
I would support that motion reluctantly.
Cece?
Yes.
Cora?
She had to leave.
Derek?
He had to leave.
No, I'm on. I'm on. I abstain.
Okay. Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Kimber? Mariah?
Mariah's left.
Stacy?
Yes.
Quanice?
Can y'all say, say the motion again?
Oh, Lord. Oh, Lord.
No, for real, like, because it was a lot of people talking, can you just say it one more time so I could hear it?
I'm hoping I say it the same way again. The motion is that the full commission be presented, the winners of the Art Bank award in photos two days before the vote is required at the full commission meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Privately.
Yeah, privately, just full commission.
I vote yes.
The yes is have it.
I didn't get to vote, but I'm voting yes, Kay.
No, I counted you, Rona. Okay. Is there any more new business? Any more discussion?
Good job, everyone.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Good staff. Thank you, Huron. Bye.